I think her write this great article. Whoever did that on our communication side did a terrific job. And that was given to me by somebody who's a sailor. Second, I also gave you an article. I was in Greensboro a couple of weeks ago and just happened to be reading the paper. I try to get the local paper wherever I am. They had a, an article that shows that Greensboro has a, police go through internal affairs. Then there's, after internal affairs, there's a citizens committee appointed by council that then handles appeals that come from that particular internal affairs committee. That being said, it seems that in Greensboro, that city council committee, some people were dissatisfied in local, African-American meeting, they decided to have their own. And it talks about what those types of committees do, how they work. I thought it was very interesting because I didn't see anything that we had that was similar. But it's for everyone's adification and discussion. That was the only reason I had a copy. Thank you.
Mr. Reddick?
Yeah. I guess the first thing is R three. And I think what this, which I'm opposed to it. But what distressed me about it more is that it has come to us from the planning commission with alcohol starting at 10:00 AM on a Sunday. And I hope we push it back. And I hope everybody got a copy of the people who are actually opposed to this. And then I hope that they will never, even if we consider the appropriate facility with alcohol on Sunday, that it won't, it'll do like it normally is. It starts like after 11:00 or 12:00 AM. And it's a church around the coast there. But anyway, another thing, I guess we all know that we lost Daniel Montague, who was a good guy.
Sure.
And he goes on along with the list of Sarah Lena Conley. Remember her? And Luther Armstrong. You know, these were Norfolk citizens who came down to the council almost every, every week. Sarah Conley ran in every election. Luther ran in a bunch of elections.
And Redusenberry.
Yeah. So we're gonna miss old, old Dan Montague.
Again.
And probably what a lot of people don't know is that Daniel was spearhead of getting an elevator in Booker T. Washington High School. His grandson went to the school and they did not have an elevator. And Herbert, Daniel and I met with Mr. Wagner, who was the principal at that time. And I think they were able to get an elevator there. So we should have thought about him when it rained because that's what brought him down here in 93. He had this terrible flood on Creek Street and he's been coming every step. That's all that happened.
I went to Booker T. I didn't know there was an elevator there.
Because it was. It just, it just was just put in the last few years.
Okay.
Mark?
Oh, sorry.
I don't know what happened this morning with HRT, but I saw a lot of people standing at bus stops this morning that I normally don't see. And I don't know if, I didn't see any flooding at all on Ocean View Avenue, but there were a lot of people sitting at bus stops, angry people. And I'm trying to figure out if there was miscommunication where somebody thought maybe there was flooding down in Ocean View, but there was not. I mean, there was flooding on the Bay Streets, but by that time, the roads were clear. And I'm just wondering where those buses were starting from. Angry people.
Imagine so.
And you can see them as you're driving by, angry people. I'm hoping that it, something didn't happen.
Yeah. Like a deal with the snow.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, I have an introduction to make. Brittany, you want to stand up just briefly now? Brittany has agreed to become my new executive assistant in the mayor's office. She's taken Bryant's job, who, as you remember, left, I guess in February. And so Brittany is a native of Philadelphia, was recruited to William &amp; Mary on the gymnastics team, was captain of the gymnastics team there. Also had a minor designation as an All-American at some level. And has an econ degree. She went back to Philadelphia and she worked in the community for about a year, doing some organizing, working in a couple, some political campaigns. And then she went to the University of Pennsylvania, which is Ivy League school, got her master's in public administration. Left there, got some designation that I'm not quite sure of, some sort of presidential fellow. Then she went to work at HUD at, for four years as working in the budget office there at HUD. And placed in some pretty nice positions there. She married a naval officer and has been transferred here, which is how she gets to us. So I found her in City Hall, which actually flies for the job.
I stole her.
I stole her from planning. She was working for George.
What?
She was, just started with me a couple of days ago, but she can be of help to any member of the council if they need her. I get that right, Brittany?
Yes.
We had to rehearse that. So, okay. That's it, Mr. Manager.
Okay. So Mayor, I hope I don't get myself in trouble. I would like to make one brief introduction also to Morgan Wayman, who is, she's gonna be very upset because I call her the new winter. She's the new assistant to the city manager. And Morgan, the great thing about Morgan, back in 2011, she started off as an intern in our Norfolk Emerging Leaders Program. And every time she had an opportunity, she just knocked it out of the park, working both in the budget office and helping with our economic summits, also helping with K through 12 and higher education. So we're very pleased that Morgan is, continues to be a part of Team Norfolk. So she's the new assistant to the city manager.
Good.
Great.
Okay. Mayor, members of council, this is a, pick back up where we were a couple of weeks ago with an update on where we stand with trying to resolve some challenging issues, particularly with the, in Ocean View with the Cottage Line dunes. As you may recall, there were 23 applications that were submitted back in the spring to the Norfolk Wetlands Board for modification to the dunes. Seventeen of those were able to be resolved because they were out of coastal primary dune system, and five of which remained unresolved. As part of that, we also made a commitment to you as a data-driven organization to make sure that we had coastal engineering that was done to, to understand what, if any modifications, could be done. Because at the time, we, we had espoused that any modification was not permissible. What we wanted to do was make sure that within the confines of the state and federal restraints and regulations, that where the, the risk for flood damage would not be increased. We needed to be able to resolve that to get those federal agencies to understand the modifications. We've done the assessment. We now believe that there are modifications that could be made, whereas in the spring we didn't, we did not. And so the next steps before I turn it over to the Moffett Nickel team to explain what the findings of the study were was, number one, we need to validate with those federal agencies that have been in communication with us, including today here in City Hall, what the findings of the study were. And to get their agreement that the findings of the study could, could be accomplished. Second, we need to have a communication officially or a wrap-up of the report because there was, based on an input session with residents in the summer, there was a version two that was done. And we need to make sure that the conclusions of the study are fully understood by the Norfolk Wetlands Board. We need to coordinate with property owners that still have unresolved issues and see where modifications can be made. One of the issues that was, was prevalent, there's a lot of discussion about dune heights, but one of the issues that was prevalent in discussions was the fact that there was encroachment sometimes on structures, particularly the primary residential structure. And most of the encroachments of the application, the sand where it's not in the coastal primary dune system, we were able to resolve that. But we do recognize, you may not be aware, that we have an adopted beach management plan that was established in 1993. The two primary objectives of that plan, that is updated and evaluated every six months, is for storm erosion protection and then to develop, well, for storm and erosion protection. Those were the primary objectives of that 93 study, which had great collaboration between citizen input, Old Dominion University, attorney's office, and the administration on how to come up with a, a plan that basically has resulted in the award-winning dune system in some portions of Ocean View that's out there. A key piece that we would, that we would like to move forward on development is consideration of an encroachment buffer program. How, if any, could we be more proactive to make sure that we don't have any of that accretion or sand movement, particularly into a, the primary residential structure? So we're gonna further explore that and see what, what added enhancement to our beach management plan. But we've committed to the Army Corps, we're committing to you, that the 93 plan has, has given us a great baseline and grown to where we are. And now we need to update, particularly with the Army Corps project that's coming forward and in recognition that encroachment buffer program is warranted. So I'm gonna turn it over to the Moffett Nickel team now to come back to the recommendations of the study for what modifications we believe could be made to the primary dune system.
Thank you, council. I'm gonna introduce real quickly my colleague Johnny Martin here. He, he has come to this meeting to, because we worked on the study together, Johnny's actually been working on Ocean View beaches for longer than I have. We did do the study together. So in order to answer any questions you might have as we talk about this, Johnny's here for that. And I would like to, if I can, real briefly skip through some of the first slides here because this is the same presentation that we, we started talking about last time. We established what the residents were interested in doing in terms of the wetlands board application to, to move the top of the dune and put that sand on the front of the dune. And we'd gotten almost to the point of discussing the engineering study that analyzed that to try to determine what, if any, impacts to the, the flood probability would be behind the dune by doing that. So bear with me, I'm gonna skip through some of these slides that we've already talked about. And Mr. Williams talked about the regulatory framework and just real general, the type of dune modification that we analyzed was taking the existing dune, removing a portion, removing the crest of the dune down to the proposed elevation of plus 14. And then we also looked at a couple of other elevations of plus 16 and plus 18. And putting that sand seaward of the dune, so the dune gets wider but lower. And then what would the difference in the flood response or the, the storm response of the dune be in that situation versus the current, present day situation? How, how different would they be and would there be any sort of increased potential for flood surge or waves to come back over the dune and impact a structure? Skip through these. We can always come back and talk about those, of course, but I want to make sure we touch on the core of the study. Again, the engineering study was set up to look at what, if any, impacts or increases in, in flood damage potential. And by damage potential, I mean the possibility of the storm surge itself in a hurricane in nor'easter, the storm surge itself, or on top of the surge, the wave action, either direct waves or wave run-up and overtopping. What would the possibility be of those having a greater ability to impact the structures behind the dunes after the dune modifications were done? To do that, we used a model or a tool, a modeling tool that's been in the industry for a long time. The Corps of Engineers uses it for their studies now. It was the same tool that the Corps used to study the Ocean View Beach for the current federal project, and it's used all over the country to analyze dune erosion in storms. And it does a very good job of predicting the, the point at which the erosion stops on the dune and where the waves would then impact the dune itself and landward of the dune. It's called S-Beach. In general, we computed beach and dune erosion and where the wave action would end up on the dune for the existing condition for a number of storms. And I'll talk about the storms we looked at, historical storms that have occurred here mainly. And we did the same thing for the changed dune and to see what the difference would be. And that's in line with the FEMA guidance of, you know, what would the modification do in terms of flood potential? We compared the results and then evaluated whether anything increased or evaluated what changed. And we can talk about those shortly. In terms of evaluating the, the results, we evaluated the result at the seaward edge of the property line behind the dune. So not just looking at dune damage itself, that's certainly gonna occur in these storms, but what's happening at the property line behind the dune, which is where it starts to matter to the, the structures themselves, because some of the structures are very near the forward property line. The storms we looked at, we didn't make up a-
Is the area currently in a flood zone? The part that was evaluated?
Some of the area is considered to be in flood zone X because the primary frontal dune is by definition, FEMA's definition and the city's adopted definition, is in flood zone X.
Right.
I don't believe any of the actual structures are presently in a flood zone other than X. X being the 500-year floodplain and/or outside the 500-year. I can't say absolutely, but I don't believe any of the structures are currently in the floodplain. You can verify that. The, the flood zone, the, the zone X goes to the landward point of the primary frontal dune. So FEMA is currently reevaluating flood maps. If they basically draw or determine that the landward edge of the primary frontal dune is back in the structure line, then those may be affected. But I, I don't have those documented right at the moment because they're still in, in review.
But the, the dune system itself is VE. Right. Which is the highest, you know, velocity impact of a tidal system.
So I wanted to look at not, we wanted to look at historical storms that have impacted the area and that are representative of what may easily happen in the future. We looked at things like Hurricane Irene and Hurricane Isabel. Irene from 2011, Isabel from 2003 is being one of the sort of storms that people refer back to in this area and further up the bay. The 2009 nor'easter from November 2009, in some ways more damaging or more intent, more, more of an issue for erosion than a hurricane because of its long duration. It had acted over a number of high tides with high surge and high waves and did a bit of damage to the dunes. The August 1933 hurricane is still the storm of record in the lower Chesapeake Bay, of course. If you adjust its water level measured at Sewell's Point, if you adjust that for sea level rise, it's still the highest water level measured in this area since they started keeping records at Sewell's Point. It's, it's water level, the still water level at Sewell's Point is about equal to the FEMA 1% annual chance, or said a different way, the 100-year return period, it's also their base flood elevation. So this is approximately the still water elevation that's on the FEMA maps at present.
Yeah.
Is represented by the 33 hurricane. And then also Tropical Storm Ernesto from 2006. We'll say from Ernesto in 2006, Irene in 2011, and the 2009 nor'easter, we have data on what the waves looked like directly off Cottage Line from the wave gauge that the city's maintained out there for a number of years. We also have recorded data from Sewell's Point. So we know what the storm looked like very near the beach from those storms. In addition to those historical storms and following FEMA guidance on how to look at this issue, we looked at two storms that have a, a greater return period or a less probability every year of occurring than the August 1933 hurricane. We based them on the hurricane, the shape of the hurricane, the impact and severity of the hurricane, but we raised the water level to equal the FEMA 200-year return period, still water level. That would be what I'm calling Hurricane X, for lack of a more original name to call it. Those two storms, Hurricane X, Hurricane Y. Y was again a 200-year storm, but looking at the statistics slightly differently. When you do statistics on water level, you end it with a curve as shown here. When we evaluate historical data to get that return period and pull a number out, we look through the middle of the data and that gives a central or sort of average best estimate. But there are some uncertainty bounds on that. So to account for the uncertainty, we compute a high confidence interval, which is the, the top orange line on that graph. So we're saying with, with about equal confidence, the number could be in the middle or it could be at the top of that graph. And so we use two storms that replicate both of those positions, the middle at 200-year and the top at 200-year, to get a range of what could occur in that particular return period. We saw recently Hurricane Katrina and then Hurricane Sandy, most recently, that things beyond 100-year return period do occur. And when they do, they can be more damaging than anything you've seen in the past. And that's why we looked at that in this case. We also looked, again, following FEMA guidance on this issue, they, FEMA headquarters issued a guidance document in 2010 that we were sent a copy of. It says, not only do we look at single intense storms, but to understand what flood damage might look like in a storm behind a dune, we want to look at two storms occurring in succession. So if you have a hurricane in the fall and then a severe nor'easter in the winter, or a nor'easter in March or April, and then before you can take action on the dune, a major hurricane in the fall, what would be the reaction of the dune in that case? And we did look at that. So looking at the results from the engineering study, from the model, this graph represents the dune profile taken as part of the city's regular monitoring program at First Bay Street in the, in the southern southeastern end of the Cottage Line area. Don't know if I have a laser here. Red. Here we go. So a lot of lines appear. The graphs represent the distance from Ocean View Avenue on the bottom, so just distance across the beach, going from landward on the left to seaward on the right. And on the Y-axis, from the bottom to the top, just represents elevation. So most seaward here, we have the, the beach berm starting, the waves would approach from this way. They would, the surge would rise and the waves would attack the dune. The dotted black line is the beginning of the model simulation. So after we hit it with, with one storm and then did the back-to-back storm, this is what the dune would look like at the beginning. And then the colored lines are what the model predicted that the dune would look like at the end of the storm. So how far back did the erosion or any other effects occur? So the green line is what would occur in the nor'easter of 2009 if it occurred again today. We get some dune erosion, but it doesn't erode nearly to the crest of the dune or the landward side of the dune where the property lines start, the property lines being this vertical black line. The blue line is a replication of the August 1933 hurricane. You'd get more erosion in that case, but again, at that transect, because of its elevation of how, it starts with an elevation of about plus 18 feet in AVD 88 in its present form. Because of its current elevation and the width of the dune seaward of the property line, you still don't get erosion back past the dune crest and into the properties. If we look at the Hurricane X 200-year return period storm, it didn't go much further back than the August 1933 hurricane. The main difference between those two storms was a difference in stormwater elevation or surge elevation of about a foot, not very much, honestly. So with that difference of about a foot in the surge level, we didn't see very much difference in the, the dune profile response, the dune erosion response. But add another foot on top of that, which generates the Hurricane Y response, and the dune becomes overwhelmed and erodes back with some wave action and erosion effects going on at the property lines, the seaward property line. So to translate this into, would there be, what would the impacts be to this dune? We would say there's generally no impact to the, the properties in the nor'easter, the 1933 hurricane, or the Hurricane X, but we would see wave action impacts on the properties in Hurricane Y.
Why did you guys use up 200 years? And doesn't FEMA use 100-year for their, when they do their flood maps?
FEMA uses the 100-year return period to map the, the base flood elevations for determining whether, whether you're in the 100-year floodplain so that you fall into the regulations that go with that. That's their target for mapping that. But they do recommend, in the guidance for this issue, this issue coming out of the flood insurance regulations, the code of federal regulations that go with FEMA, their guidance says, looking at events less, more and less frequent than the, the 100-year. So they would, they want you to look at a range, both more frequent storms and, and less frequent storms. There's nothing particularly magical about the 100-year return period storm. It's the one that was agreed upon in the 60s or 70s when the law was written as a way to sort of normalize flood, flood insurance and floodplain management guidance. But this is a specific issue of dunes, they recommend going beyond that.
200 is a big span.
Well, if you look at it a different way, what it really means, this is, this is why I start to talk about things in percent annual chance. The 100-year return period storm doesn't mean something that's going to happen every 100 years. It means it has a 1% chance of happening every year. With a 200-year return period, it means it has a half percent chance of happening every year. So it's not like you get yourself an extra 100 years, it's just you lower the probability this year that it's gonna happen. But you're right, it is still a significantly bigger number than the 100-year. However, Hurricane Sandy was well beyond 100-year for the areas that it impacted most directly. Katrina, I'm not sure if Katrina's number, but it was certainly beyond the design condition that people were looking at. So.
Specifically why we ran it was because of that guidance of the FEMA regulations that said, you run the base flood, but then you also have to run more frequent and less frequent. So, because when they're looking at these things, they want to be able to kind of see a band, a band of what the effects are for different weather storms.
Would the 200 be a typical? I mean, would you?
Typical what term?
The 200-year review. I mean, that's 200 years. Most of the, I don't have many cities in America even that old. It's 1980. You know?
It's a pretty extreme level, granted, but they also didn't plot the 500-year as well. So it's all about assigning risk and looking at risk and probabilities. But I mean, it is, it is a very low frequency event. There's, there's no doubt about that. It's just in their guidance that they want you to look at that range of storms.
Well, there's a 1% chance that Paul Fram would not get elected. So I'm gonna go with that. 200. 200. That you'll be mayor. You'll still be around. We won't.
Yeah.
And there, and as he said, we do have two 200-year runs here. And you see how, you know, assuming what the surge level is, a difference of a foot makes a big difference.
Right. Right. A one-foot difference in the stormwater, in the storm surge elevation makes the difference between the dune not really being overtopped and eroded and the dune being heavily eroded with waves moving on the property, moving sand around on the property. To put that in some context, if we look at the historical sea level rise from Sewell's Point and looking at the projections for the future, that one foot is about 40 to 50 years worth of time on the historical curve of, you know, we're looking at a one-foot rise in Sewell's Point levels in the next 50 years. So it gives you some range of overtime.
But from what we know in this section, there's never been a breach of that dune that we know historically, with whatever height's been there.
I've had the measurements of bridges in that dune.
There's never been a floodplain made, there's never been-
Right. Well, well, I mean, we see that the storm of record is the 1933 storm and the model shows that it, you know, it wasn't breached during that event. So I mean, that's, it just means we haven't seen a 200-year event there yet.
Okay. However, if this was East Beach or Willoughby, we'd be dealing with a different situation because they don't have a dune structure at all, really, either one of those locations.
Yeah, they certainly don't have a dune in this.
Right.
Yeah, robust. Bear with me for a second, I'm gonna show you what happens if I change the height of the dune from a plus 18-foot elevation down to a 16 and down to a 14. Keep in mind, 14 was the, the elevation proposed in the, the latest wetlands board application that was moved on to VMRC after that. So this is starting with an 18-foot elevation. If we take the same storms down to 16 feet, so we take the sand out of the top of the dune, put it on the seaward edge, and the nor'easter, it still performs okay in the nor'easter, the August 33 hurricane, but the Hurricane X, the 200-year storm, does start to show sand migrating over the top of the dune. And what that means is that there actually is some water moving over the top of the dune to move that sand. So you start to, you begin to have some sort of wave action, probably overwash and overtopping happening at the seaward property line. And the Hurricane Y, the, the sort of larger 200-year storm moves back even further onto the properties. If we go ahead and look at taking the dune down to plus 14, then the nor'easter's still okay, you're still okay in the nor'easter, but the August 33 hurricane is starting to encroach on the property line. Hurricane X is past the property line. And Hurricane Y, given where the structures appear to be at, at most of these transects, then the Hurricane Y would be back into the structures at that point. And you could possibly have erosion of, near the foundation of the structures. So that's just the, the math of how the, the coastal engineering tools predicted the beach would, and the dune would change in these storms.
Is it relevant, the width of the beach?
The width of the low beach here?
Yes. From where the water normally is at tide to the point of the front of the dune, is that relevant at all in your consideration?
It is relevant. The response of the dune is not nearly as sensitive to the width of the beach as it is to the, the crust height of the dune and the width of the dune above where the still water level would be. FEMA and most other researchers and guidance on this, as you look at computing the, the width and the volume of the dune above where the storm's still water level would be, so as the tide and the surge come in, if the water is here.
Right.
They have you compute the volume above that. And that really seems to be what plays into the dune response itself. The relevance of the width of the beach is that as it increases significantly, if you start doubling and tripling the width of the beach, then you're obviously, you are in fact changing the nature of the waves approaching. But small changes in the width of the beach on the order of, you know, tens of feet don't really-
They're proposing rock berms, I believe, going down the coastline. Does that slow? I'm using rock berms, I don't know the correct term.
The Corps of Engineers-
Corps of Engineers, right. Do those slow down wave action too? I mean, I'm assuming...
The Corps project is talking about putting sand. So, taking the existing berm and adding sand to it to make it wider. There, the distance, if you had zero berm, they're talking about adding, they're talking about making sure you have 60 feet of berm total. So, if you had zero, it would be to add 60 to that. Zero to 60 would be a difference. At Cottage Line, you have approximately 60 to start with. So, even if you got a little bit extra, the wouldn't be that, the dune wouldn't be that sensitive to just adding a little extra. Going from nothing to 60 would make some difference.
Aren't they planting jetties or...
Breakwaters.
Breakwaters, thank you. Are they planting that all the way down the coastline?
Not, not to my knowledge.
We have certain breakwater fields that have been developed. Luckily now, the Army Corps accepts that as an engineering practice where they cannot before. So, that's hence the ability to finally move forward on what was originally agreed to in '83. There's not planned for additional breakwater fields.
To answer your question, did the Army Corps of Engineers make a recommendation about the height of the berm?
The height of the berm or the dune?
Right, of the dune, sand dune.
In their analysis, they looked at different dune heights. They said that the way they do their economics is to look at the response of all these different alternatives. And they judge the alternative that gives the highest benefit cost ratio in terms of cost to build it versus damages prevented. They judged the highest benefit cost ratio at a berm width of 50 feet and a dune height of 14 feet. That wasn't necessarily a recommended dune height for obtaining any particular kind of protection. It just said that this minimizes our cost to build and maintain versus the costs of flood, you know, damages that may occur behind it in the future. So, they recommended as the, what they call the National Economic Development Plan, or getting the most bang out of your dollar.
You don't think that's sufficient?
Well, hang on. Judging, going on the question that FEMA's regulation poses is, what does your existing protection look like and will your action reduce that? Reducing down to 14 does increase the risk of wave overtopping and wave action on the properties behind the dune.
Well, if you were 20, you went down to 18, the same principle would apply.
What's that?
If you were 20-foot and you came down to 18, that same principle would apply, right?
Yeah, what we have is pretty much a disconnect between what FEMA's requirements are. One will say disconnect, but the difference in what FEMA's requirements are and what they, what they say in looking at alterations to the dune versus, you know, what, when the Corps looks at building a project and what they're going to put federal money toward is sort of an optimization of, you know, benefits versus cost. They're not, they're not going to tell you that this, that what they're building is good for a 25-year storm or a 50-year storm, 100-year storm. They're just going to say, this is sort of an optimal economic solution for benefits versus damages mitigated for. So, whereas FEMA is more worried about what is the level of protection that you're providing with your current system and what would change about that if you make any alterations to it.
Because FEMA relies on a completely different set. Where do they get their statistics? They don't, the Corps engineer doesn't impact that at all. So, we have two federal agencies that are kind of saying, I understand what you're saying, but where do they, they just, how do they come up with what they think is appropriate or right? Obviously, 100-foot would be better.
Especially recently, FEMA and the Corps do joint things. Like the recent, the current flood maps that are coming out of FEMA preliminary for Virginia Beach and Norfolk and Hampton and Chesapeake and the whole area are based on a core study of statistics, of what the numbers look like. What is the storm surge? What are the waves like? But FEMA and the Corps have somewhat different missions. FEMA's mission is to regulate, both regulate what can be done in the floodplain as part of, basically the fact that they provide a means of getting flood insurance in the floodplain, they also regulate what can be done in the floodplain. So, they're, they're providing insurance, but they're also trying to help communities manage the risk and minimize the risk because they're offering insurance. The Corps is, has the mission to help communities increase their flood, I'm trying to think of the right word, flood resilience or flood resistance, but they have to do it in such a way that they get the highest benefit cost ratio. So, you could spend more money and get above, you know, a level that would be damaged in the 100-year return period, but the extra money it costs to get above that threshold, to get to that threshold, is not judged by the economic analysis in this case to, you know, to be, or in some cases, I don't know what they would have judged in this case. But in some cases, that extra money to go from it's okay in a 50-year return period up to it's okay in a 100-year return period is not as cost-effective. So, their mission is to do the project by that greatest benefit cost. And FEMA's mission is to basically help communities mitigate and avoid flood damage based on changing their existing setup.
This 60-foot berm, if we were lined up to get all the way down, right? Or, we don't know exactly where we're getting.
Yeah, you have, the way the Corps author, the report authorized by Congress, or the report that authorizes what FEMA or what the Corps is currently designing and looking at, says that a 60-foot wide berm is the target minimum. Not to add an additional 60 feet everywhere, but to make sure everywhere has 60 feet. And they can go beyond that if they judge that's necessary. But the target says to have a 60-foot berm. So, somewhere that has a 40 already may only get another 20 by the, by the letter of that report, and they have discretion.
Maybe you said, I missed, that spending that money, putting a 14-foot berm from Wayne all the way from East Beach to Willoughby.
You mean dune, right?
A dune, excuse me, a dune. Wouldn't they be better off spending that money based on what you're saying, whatever height, you know, whether you argue it's 18 or 14. Wouldn't they be better off spending that money putting that from East Beach to Willoughby rather than a berm?
They may be better off straightening the coastline so that it doesn't collect the sand there, and then it will, it won't wash away, you know, that's...
It's a combination. In a place where you don't have 14 feet, that's what their design has built in.
Everywhere from, from East Beach to Willoughby, you'll have a minimum of 14-foot of dune.
Not as part of the plan, it's...
Just 60 feet.
The 60 feet is the berm.
No, they're not having dunes as part of this.
But I'm hearing that. Didn't I hear the dune is more effective than the berm?
They go together. A lot of this is judgment call, and I don't want to speak for the Corps. So, I'm going to be a little bit careful about this. I mean, this is something they need to weigh in on if you have specific questions about it. The, the plan they looked at said, the National Economic Development Plan, or the Highest Benefit Cost Ratio Plan for what the federal government could do would involve a 14-foot, not a 14-foot high dune above the beach, but a 14-foot elevation dune. So, the top would be at 14 feet in AVD-88, which is a certain distance above mean high tide, and a berm width of a certain distance. There had also been an alternative in the works to do a 60-foot wide berm that was also considered. And between the local sponsor, the city and the Corps, it was decided that the 60-foot wide berm is the current authorized project, not to add the dune at plus 14. So, I wasn't part of those discussions. I don't know the weight of how that was made. But the current project looks at having a minimum of 16-foot wide berm and not adding to the dune from the federal project.
Somebody that said that's more effective.
That judgment was made through some calculation. I'm not sure all the ins and outs.
Be more effective to have a 60-foot berm, 14-foot or 18-foot or any dune, right?
I can, you can help me out here too, but there were two alternatives, as Brian said, that were considered by the Corps. And one was the 50-foot wide berm, which is, that's where you put your beach blanket. That's kind of a misleading term sometimes, but that's the, just the recreational area of the beach. And, and to do something with the dunes, to enhance the height of the dunes. And the other alternative was the 60-foot wide berm to make sure that you have a 60-foot wide berm in all areas up and down the beach. And, and I think that we, I'm not sure what guidance we provided, but they basically have about the same economic benefit, the same protection levels for those two scenarios. And to prevent some of the views from being lost because of increased dune height, we opted for the 60-foot berm width.
The idea was for the Corps to accept that we would have local management of the dune system to try to manage it as opposed to them coming in and just artificially creating this higher dune that would block views even more. The idea was to create a beach out there and that we would manage the dune to keep the optimal height of it as best we could. Obviously, in some areas, like in Willoughby, you can't create an 18 or 20-foot high dune in that construct based on where development is and how the shoreline responds. So, the idea was that we had years of experience in managing the dune and that we would, the Corps would defer to our local management of the dune as opposed to coming in artificially raising it. But the sand would be in the system to provide the benefit.
FEMA would not defer to our management.
No, they had a direct guidance that said if you were going to do something, you had to follow these protocols, completely separate. It's almost, as I've said, an apples and oranges comparison. They're two different issues that are being looked at. Corps is looking at it to try to help communities solve or work toward erosion protection. FEMA is looking specifically at risk of flood damage. They're two different issues, two separate issues.
FEMA is not saying build all the dunes to x height to make the insurance rates go down.
No, they don't require you to do that. But if you want to come in and lower a dune, then they want you to do that analysis.
But as a city, we have the opportunity to look at the proposed changes to this. And that's why this data becomes important because if we're making assumptions or recommendations of storm X and Y could happen, the damage could be done, then FEMA could then come back and say that we're going to move this section of Cottage Line into a VE zone, which I believe is probably being proposed with this.
The area is a VE now. The dune system is defined as VE.
Okay, go, go back to slide five. It has a yellow image of... Sorry. This, so this is the current, this is the current flood map for Cottage Line? Or is this the proposed?
There's a difference, there's a difference between what the map depicts from old data to what the actual V-zone is currently. It had always been the limit of the coastal dune feature is the V-zone. And there is no difference between that and what the current situation is and what the new map showed.
Okay, is this the new map or the old?
I believe that's the new.
This is a...
This is the proposed one.
Sort of an advanced work copy of the new one.
Right.
It may have changed slightly since.
So, what this is showing me is, from one that I've seen before, is that yellow has now moved south and is now covering properties. There are some buildings in that area. So, there, the proposed FEMA map is going to move properties into VE that normally were not paying flood insurance before?
The primary residential structure has to be in the VE. So, it's not the parcel, it's the structure. And so, and that's, that's where, yes, in part, encroachment management, as I suggested earlier, that we make sure that we help prevent that as well, to make sure that the primary coastal dune system does not encroach into the structure that then would require the flood insurance.
So, when this was proposed, is this being proposed off of a storm X and Y for a 200-year storm of X and Y with lowering the dunes of 14 feet?
I, this looks to me, and I don't have the whole engineering study of how they, how they mapped the specific line, but it looks to me like a primary funnel dune map V-zone. And in that case, FEMA looks at the landward extent of the primary funnel dune. It says, by definition, according to the federal law, a primary funnel dune is in the V-zone. So, regardless of the storm that's out front of that dune, the landward edge of the dune is in fact in the V-zone. So, if that's how they drew that, then it's really not that relevant which storm...
And it's getting more precise. This is based on LiDAR data. Whereas before, they, you know, there was, the early iterations, I guess, like a better term, was more of a line on the map. Now, they actually use LiDAR data to determine what's the elevation, what is that, you know, undulation that happens and whether or not that is that zone where they see the...
But most of that property is currently in Zone X. Now, if you were to pull up an old version of the flood map, all of Cottage Line is in an X zone. They don't pay flood insurance at all.
I guess a key point, just a key point on the, on the V-zone is, if you look at the old maps, it did not define the V-zone based on the regulation. It was put at the toe of the dune, not the landward, the channel were toe, not in back. So, if that map was a wrong depiction of what the regulation at that time said that the V-zone would be, there really has been no change in the definition of what a V-zone is. There's just a difference in that it being accurately depicted in the new maps where it was inaccurate in the old maps.
If I could ask you, do you mind if I go ahead and show you what, how the results came out and what a recommendation would be, and then we can discuss some more. So, from, I tried to, you know, explain what the model results came out as and how they looked. And if we tabulate what happened at all the transects, all the different profiles that we had available to look at along Cottage Line, starting from Beachview Street on the west end and going down to Third Bay Street as you go down the table on the, on the east end, a 14-foot crest dune as proposed, you know, to the Wetlands Board in the application is on the right side. And then we go to a 16-foot crest dune, and then an 18-foot crest dune. And then finally, to the existing dune, what that looks like. This is in the August 1933 hurricane, this table. It's all relative to that storm. So, at several of the transects, going down to 14 feet would increase the potential for basically impact from storm surge or waves at the landward property line, which we're seeing as an increase in potential for flood damage in the August 1933 hurricane. The, some of the ones that didn't have an increase had a higher dune volume above that stillwater level we talked about. If we go to 16 feet, we see less of an increase, less transects, less places that would have an increase in flood risk, but still one or two at Inlet Road and then down at Third Bay Street. In the August 1933 hurricane, those at a 16-foot crest would still have some increased flood risk. And then at an 18-foot dune crest, none of the transects showed an increase in flood risk in that particular storm. If we add basically a foot to the storm surge elevation and add somewhat to the wave height that goes with that for the Hurricane X 200-year return period storm, then we still see, as you'd expect, lots of increase in potential flood risk at the 14-foot elevation because same elevation and more water. You see another transect at plus 16 that would be affected with an increase in flood risk. And then even one here at the Third Bay Street that would be affected at the 18-foot crest elevation in Hurricane X. Some of these have NA in them because they're not that high to start with. So, if the dune was already, was only at 14 feet now, then obviously, it's not relevant to see what would happen there with a 16 or an 18-foot because you're not creating that. And finally, in Hurricane Y, we start to see transects even begin to show increased flood risk even at plus 18 feet, although some of these are slight increases. And at that point, it becomes more relevant what the dune volume is. So, with an 18-foot dune crest, if we're seeing increase in flood damage, it's because there's not enough volume above the stillwater. And taking all that together, in general, lowering the dune crest shows increased risk. But with the caveat that obviously dune height and dune volume or dune width taken, taken together, they act together to mitigate the storm, to keep the storm waves off the properties. And if we look at Hurricane Y, so for a 200-year return period, 0.5% annual chance storm, reducing the dune crest to or below 18-foot in AVD-88 would increase the risk of flood damage due to most likely wave overtopping and overwash. And even with an 18-foot dune elevation, we need to maintain a dune volume of about 30 cubic yards per foot above that stillwater elevation.
And these are back-to-back storms?
And this is with the back-to-back storms, yes. We haven't put sea level rise at this particular conclusion, although that basically increases the annual risk that something's going to happen. Because as the surge, as the tide level gets higher, you have a higher risk that the total water level is going to be higher. water level is going to be higher, which I should have put that up. But continuing sea level rise will raise the required dune crest elevation to go with a specific level of protection.
If you take out the back-to-back storm and just did one storm, would any of this be the same?
There is some sensitivity to it. It's not incredibly sensitive. Some of the numbers start to move a little bit. We looked at things on a two-foot increment, 14, 16, 18. So, again, relative sea level rise will make any of the annual chance levels more frequent as you add a higher tide onto the whatever storm surge would have been in the first place. That's the end of what I've prepared. I'm sure you've got more questions.
Well, Ms. Wayne, again, we have communicated this to FEMA, Army Corps, and want to get them on record for agreeing that modifications could be made based on this data. We need an understanding from them at, is it per their 20, their 2010 guidance on the 200-year or half percent chance that they want modification consideration, or is it at the 100-year or 1% chance? And then, we know that there are still, again, outstanding at a minimum five applications or residents that we need to assist with looking at what modifications could be made. But again, within the confines of what FEMA and the state VMRC has, you know, has out there as regulatory confines to work within. We will start, initiate a analysis and a redo of the 1993 beach management and to include recommendations for encroachment buffer management as well. What that means, for example, is the applications, the 17 that were allowed to do work and create at a minimum a five-foot buffer, clear any sand around the structure that had encroached upon the property. Those were done because, outside of the Wetlands Board permit, because it wasn't in the coastal primary dune system. What we could do proactively, because this city has the authority as a local government, is we could establish a program where we work with homeowners to do the work, and then we also reutilize that sand to look at where we have blowout scenarios or other areas that need more volume to try to meet those sweet spots where the height and the volume need to be managed. So, there's a lot of different steps, and it's not a silver bullet. And again, it's very complex. I would suggest that probably it'd take, you know, a good year or two, or Cindy, you were part of the original 93, I don't know how long it took you to put together that plan, four years. My goal was at a minimum two years to try to put together an updated plan, particularly as it dovetails with what the Army Corps project is, which will start, commence construction next summer, Chuck. That's the plan right now. So, but we, the short term is to get a response from the federal agencies and to see what we can do for the applicants that have unresolved issues.
What are VMRC's ruling on this appeal due to all of this? They say Wetlands has acted properly.
Well, we have seen the staff's recommendation, which is that they do not agree with the Norfolk Wetlands Board recommendation. So.
Have any answers to questions?
So.
So, what if they say they agree with it? So, what happens? They can move forward?
If they agree with it, yeah, they could unless there was any other appeal out there.
Are there communications going back and forth between VMRC Board and our staff? The staff, I mean, the VMRC staff and our staff?
George, I don't know if any recent.
Nothing since the Wetlands report.
So, once they issued their report, what was it, in late July or early August, they communicated that to George?
So, is, I mean, during this several-year period while this, you know, you're trying to get some clarification or whatever you want to call it, if the dunes continue to build, I mean, I mean, are, is that what you're saying? We just have to accept that?
The long term is to modify our beach management plan, perhaps to include techniques that we haven't used before, like encroachment on structures, to include a component that is more than erosion and storm damage-related. So, that's the longer term. The short term is that we want to press on the federal agencies to give us a response so that we could recommend, if our report is accepted by the federal agencies, then what it shows is where and how modifications could be made on dune height and volume. And we would recommend that we proceed with that. And so, we would communicate that to the Wetlands Board and ask that they work in conjunction with the city to do it.
What is the time frame for that?
Again, we're going to do the best to push on the federal agencies for a response. We do know that FEMA, Region 3, which we fall under, has communicated to headquarters our report for response. They were here today discussing what the process is for the new flood insurance rate maps, and so, the conversation has had that we have an urgency and want a specific response and something that's not unclear about what their position is.
Okay. Can I ask one quick question? Where we have our accessways, I know some of them are getting overtaken by dunes. The sand is just piling up. So, do we, we move the sand away from those access points and we don't allow it to build up there, right?
Right.
So, our own practice as a city where this is happening, we don't allow the dunes to build up, which actually opens up possible places for breaching if it's lower there than in other places that's higher. But I.
Absolutely. There's a way to address it during a storm, which is to close the breach. And we have erred on public safety as a higher priority for that scenario where the breach is because, so we can have public safety emergency response on the beach, and that's why we have them. So, it is a calculated risk and why we do that.
And we don't raise the accessways?
The, we're going to further explore it, but the vehicles, I mean, I understand it's, you know, you can get boxed in on that.
Sure.
But the vehicles that we have and what we need for fire emergency response on the beach, if there is an incident, that's the consideration for what we have for that design.
Okay, so, Marcus, I'm not sure this is a, this is, still continues to be sort of a frustrating discussion for, I think, many council members. So, maybe we can schedule a few minutes. We don't have another meeting really until October except at the retreat. Maybe we can schedule a few minutes at the retreat to figure out, you know, how we're going to actually, I mean, we understand the science, but we understand the practical, the things that are happening out there, you know? I mean, there just seems to be some way that we need to apply a little bit of common sense, science to some of this, and maybe we can just talk about it. Maybe there's not a lot we can do, but maybe there is.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're going to specify at the retreat.
Yeah, yeah, right away. No more graphs, though. Yeah, no more of them. Okay. George, I hate to tell you, you're going to, we're going to cut you short here so we can get into a closed session, so, but I know you're going to introduce this to us.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that helps with one of the things that we would like to offer is an opportunity to, for y'all, each of you to meet individually with the consultants tomorrow or Thursday while they're here in town, or by telephone conference if tomorrow and Thursday are not convenient for y'all. Just real quickly, the current zoning ordinance for the city was adopted in 1992. It uses 1980s zoning philosophies and techniques, perhaps more importantly, uses 1980s technology. And we've seen an opportunity and have an effort to create a smart and dynamic ordinance that puts resilience and user-friendliness at the top of the, at the top of the list. And to do that, we've hired a consultant team that is, quite honestly, the all-star team of consultants, and it's headed by Craig Richardson of Clarion, and I'm going to turn it over to him so that we can run through in about 10 minutes or less.
Good to have you.
Well, it's great to be here, Mr. Mayor. As George has said, my name is Craig Richardson. I'm a director with Clarion Associates. I would like to introduce two of my colleagues that are here today. Vlad Gadvilik, who was with the Renaissance Group, and Stephen Sizemore, who is also with Clarion Associates. I know you've had a long afternoon. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. You do have copies of this presentation, and it goes into greater detail than I haven't had the time to spend with you this afternoon. I think the other thing I would like to emphasize is a point that George made, and we welcome the opportunity to meet with you individually, to hear about your concerns, your goals for this project as we move forward. In terms of where we're going to, I'm going to go with you in this brief time I have, I'm going to take just a second and, or half a minute and talk about the team. I'm going to very briefly cover the work program and the schedule. This is about a three-year project. It's a major undertaking. And then, the other thing that I would like to spend as much time as possible this evening talking about the goals for the project, which we think are important. One of the things we have, our firm, over the last 18 years, has comprehensively rewritten over 100 development codes for communities in, throughout Virginia, the southeast and across the country. And one of the things we have found to be extremely important in these projects is at the outset for the community to establish some overriding objectives. George mentioned resiliency as being one of them, user-friendliness being others, and, you know, what are the other ones? We're going to cover, I'd like to cover a few from you today. We'd like to hear from you if there are others you think are really important or some of these that need to be refined. Our team, Clarion Associates, is a planning and zoning consulting firm. Our bread and butter, though, we really focus on doing comprehensive rewrites to development codes for communities. We are joined by four subconsultants, Renaissance Planning Group. Vlad's here with us today out of Charlottesville, Virginia, and Orlando. They're going to focus on design, street design and form standards and street design. Milton Hurd, who has written a number of Virginia zoning codes, Sharon Pandec, who is, who'll be our legal counsel, and then the Miles Agency, who will help us with civic engagement. In terms of the process, in other words, how we're going to get from where we are today to a rewritten, modern 21st century development code, we have divided that process into seven steps, and really, five key steps. So, about a 30 to 36-month process. It's a big undertaking. Those five key steps that I do want to highlight for you are where we are right now at the beginning. We call it project initiation, but we will, we meet with a broad base of stakeholders and review boards and other groups in the community to hear from you what you think your goal, the goals for this project should be, you know, what's working and what is not working with the zoning ordinance. For example, we're meeting tomorrow with an advisory committee that's been set up. We're holding a public meeting to hear from the public. We're meeting with the Planning Commission on Thursday afternoon. If they're a regular meeting, we're meeting with you today. And we've already met with and talked with staff and stakeholders. From that, from that group of meetings and our review of your current ordinance, we're going to go to the second step, which we find is also very important. That step involves the development of a policy document, which, number one, will synthesize the overriding objectives or goals for the project, and then discuss in layperson's terms what policy options you have to address those goals. We will talk about best practices used from around the country. From that point, we'll get direction from you. Yes, this is the right approach. No, this is something that needs to be refined. And we'll go to the next step, which is the actual drafting of the ordinance. That's about a 14- or 15-month process. We will do it in increments or installments. We'll then test the code, and then, at that point, it'll be ready for public hearings. And I'm going to flip through these very quickly. As I said, it's a six, about a 30 to 36-month process. What I'd really like to focus your attention on right now, though, are some of, based upon what we have read, your recently adopted plan, the meetings that we have conducted, we have, we think we have gleaned some important goals or themes for the project, and I would like to cover those briefly for you right now. One is resiliency. A second is environmental friendliness or environmental friendly ordinance. Third is what we are calling character and context-sensitive. An ordinance that is character and context-sensitive, one that is modern, was that me or was that? Sorry. One that is modern and customized and one that is user-friendly. With respect to resiliency, I think you're well aware of the importance of this issue in Norfolk. Let me just say, this is actually an issue that excites us. We have been working with communities over the last four or five years on this issue. We did an audit in Miami-Dade County. They are getting a lot of flooding and just done some model regulations for the metro DC area. You know, the sort of areas that we're going to focus on are, you know, developing regulations to mitigate flooding and to support natural resources and resource processes that mitigate against flooding. And the other part of resiliency is this idea of social and economic resiliency. In other words, providing opportunities in your current development code that would allow for economic revitalization and renewal in your infill areas. And this is very important, too. And we have done this in a number of communities. In fact, one of the communities where we've recently updated the code was Philadelphia, where there were a lot of old zoning regulations that were creating obstacles for redevelopment in certain areas of the community. So, that's important. With respect to environmental friendliness, just two issues that I want to mention. One is just supporting this concept of resiliency. In other words, looking at your resource protection and environmental regulations to ensure that they support natural functions that make, make the community more resilient. Another is tree canopy protection. And then, a third is this idea of removing obstacles and also providing incentives to support other types of sustainable development practices. Character and context sensitivity is an issue, basically, every, one size doesn't fit all in zoning regulations. And a lot of old zoning ordinances, yours included, was, is not only suburban in character, but also is a one-size-fits-all ordinance. Norfolk has different characters and different character areas. We would suggest that one of the important goals should be, let's design the regulations to recognize and support that character and that context. It will, in fact, what we have found in our other projects is that it will unleash and remove obstacles for the types of redevelopment that you want to see in different parts of the community. We're going to modernize and customize the ordinance. We're going to, we're going to suggest some best practices. Your ordinance is about 20 years old. And finally, we're going to make it much more user-friendly through reorganization, use of graphics, a lot more graphics than you have in your, in your current ordinance, better language, and language that is more user-friendly. So, I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. We really welcome any comments that you would have about these themes or additional themes that you think are important.
Well, thank you. You know, George, back in '92, our planning director had come from a suburb of Denver at the time, who led us through that process. So, when you say our zoning regulations are somewhat suburban in nature, turns out they were. We, you know, we were finished with the process and noted on it where it actually, about parking regulations and some site plan reviews that looked, that made everything look, demanded certain types of landscaping in very urban areas that made development very difficult at times. very difficult at times for us.
Then what you're telling me is it's a really good thing that I'm from Richmond.
Yeah. I'm not surprised I would agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to, to, to close by emphasizing that we are having a public meeting tomorrow night, and we're hoping to have as many of you all, as well as planning commissioners, attend as, as possible, as well as a large number of public.
Okay. Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. We look forward to please.
So we're going to go into a closed, have a closed meeting, right?
I'm with the members of Council Assembly on closing meeting on September 9, 2014, 3:39 PM. For purposes set out in Clause 137 of the [inaudible]. That is, one, discussion candidates for appointment of city boards, commissioners, and authorities. Three, discussion of the acquisition of real property in front of purpose of the 800 block of North Military Highway, and a disposition publicly of real property in Mettaburg, Valentine, Plays, Colonial Place, Campus, Delano, Ocean View, and consultation with legal counsel and readings by staff members and consultants. And attorneys on the status of a lease at Waterside and on the continuation of Talbot Hall. Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigal?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Wen?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.